Okay, I think you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the March 23rd, 2021 Vista Consolidated Meeting. The meeting is now called back to order. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order N-29-20. In the event a quorum of the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage that is not corrected within 10 minutes, the meeting will automatically be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings would be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting, evening meeting of the City Council. Any other items on the agenda that the council has not taken action on item, that the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. So with that, we'll do the roll call by our city clerk. Please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Please state your hair when I call your name. Mayor Ritter.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Franklin.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Present.
Councilmember Melendez.
Here.
All members are present. Also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Daryl Piper.
Okay. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you may raise your hand to indicate you'd like to speak by clicking the raise hand feature on your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the agenda cover sheet. You may only speak on an item once and public comment is limited to three minutes. So with that, we'll have the approval of the agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes tonight.
Okay, with that, we will have our closed session. We brought out of our closed session by our City Attorney Daryl Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council did meet in closed session on the item listed as CS1 on this evening's closed session agenda. No action was taken that is required to be disclosed at this time.
Okay. So that takes us to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by using the raised hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. We have 12 consent items this evening. Would any of the City Council members like to remove an item? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull item number C3, please. And with that, I would motion for approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, I would entertain a second. I don't see anyone else wanting to.
Second.
Move anything. Councilmember Franklin.
My second.
Okay, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Green and a second by Councilmember Franklin.
Mayor Ritter, I'm sorry. I do have one person's hand raised. I think actually they might want to speak on oral communication, but if you're mind, let me just check and see.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Did you want to speak on this item?
No, just in public oral communication. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. We'll have you raise your hand towards the end of the meeting. We'll prompt you to do that again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then we have a roll call vote.
All right. Please state your vote when I call your name. Sorry, I was clicking still. Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Ritter.
Yes.
The balance of the consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay, with that, we will go to item C3, the appointments to the various city commissions, board and committees. And Deputy Mayor is going to take that.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. C3, as she said, is the appointments to various city commissions, boards and committees. I do not need a staff report. I just wanted to thank everyone who applied. I know Councilmember Melendez and I both did a lot of social media posting to try to get people to go ahead and apply and interview with us. A lot of people interviewed. I know everyone wasn't selected, but I did want to at least shout out my district two reps. So Victoria Waffle is on the CDVG Advisory Board. Catherine Manis is on our Community Safety Commission. Leanna Boulay is our Parks and Recs Commissioner. John Savage is our new Planning Commissioner. Amanda Mae Fitzgerald is our Public Arts Commissioner. Mary Lou Kripcliff is our Sales Tax Oversight Committee Commissioner. Sharon Larimer is our Senior Citizens Affairs Commissioner. And Callison Leahy is our District Two Traffic Commissioner. So I just wanted to shout them out. A lot of times they come into council chambers and we get to thank them. But hopefully they're watching and thank you for your service. You guys signed up to serve until March of 2025. So thank you for your commitment to the city. And with that, I would move that we approve this item.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, thank you to everybody who participated in the process to apply and interview for our local boards and commissions. This was really an enjoyable process for me. I love seeing more people get involved in our city business. And for those who have been successful in this process, I just want to say congratulations and I'll also be giving them a shout out. And for the folks that didn't get an opportunity this time around, continue to stay involved. Come to city council meetings, speak at our meetings, go to board and commission meetings, speak at those meetings and just participate at every level that you can. So I'll go ahead and give a big thank you and a shout out to my folks that I recommended. We have for the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Board, Michael Fleming. For Community Safety Commission, we have Marvin Mizell. For Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Debbie Piper. For Planning Commission, we have Dawn Looney. For Public Arts Commission, we have Jennifer Inole. For Sales Tax Oversight Committee, we have Norman Hollis. For Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, we have Richard Wilder. And for Traffic Commission, we have Edmund Alberto. And I just want to say thank you to everybody again who participated. And yes, I appreciate everybody's efforts and I appreciate the vote to approve these appointments. Thank you.
And I've interviewed your motion. Deputy Green.
Thank you. And I've interviewed people over the years and I'd like to thank, we have lots of volunteers and we always appreciate all of those who volunteered. We always can't select everyone, but we appreciate everyone that comes and applies for that. I also put on Vincent Inahosa on the Investment Advisory Board. And so I'm happy to have him do that. And then we also have the CVBID Advisory Board. If I probably should read those letters, just so those names, just so people are aware of them. That's Hans Haas, Dale Genos, Dee Dee Timmons, Ralph Blizraga, Lisa DeJew and Anthony Crossman and Tracy Lawson. And those are the CVBID Advisory Board. So their term ends March 31st, 2022. So anyway, thank you to all of our new council members, or not council members, our commission members. Almost gave everybody a raise. And we appreciate that. So with that, we will call for a roll call vote.
Thank you. Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Aye.
Mayor Ritter.
Yes.
Item passes unanimously.
Okay. Yay. And that takes us to our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is to receive testimony regarding a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at 135 Hillside Terrace. The public hearing is now open. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley will provide the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raised hand feature or pressing star nine now. And speakers will be called on after the presentation. So with that, I have turned it over to our Director John Conley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, we have a general plan amendment and zone change for a property at 135 Hillside Terrace. And I'll wait for the presentation. There it is. Thank you very much, Kathy. The project before us this evening is a public hearing to receive testimony and consider a resolution and ordinance to change zoning on a single property, as I mentioned, 135 Hillside Terrace. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the property. It's depicted with the red polygon around it. The lot is an existing 19,357 square foot parcel. It's one legal lot. It includes a residence of just over 1,000 square feet and a detached accessory structure in the back. Surrounding uses are a mix of single and multifamily residential to the north and west of the property and then existing commercial center to the south where the Chin's Restaurant is located along East Vista Way, as well as commercial uses to the east that bound the site. And the site's directly accessible via driveway on Hillside Terrace. Next slide, please. So the applicant, Mr. Baker, submitted an application for a general plan amendment and zone change at the property last December. The project site is on one lot. It includes an existing two-story residence and an accessory garage. They were built in around 1952. The site's currently designated CN, which is Commercial Neighborhood and the General Plan and Zoned Commercial on the zoning map with a non-conforming residential use on the property. A non-conforming residential use means it's a use that was established prior to the zoning change that does not conform to the current zone. The project proposes to amend the general plan land use designation on the site from Commercial Neighborhood to Medium Low Density Residential and to change the zoning from C1 to R1, which is a single-family residential zone. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the property showing the existing condition. You can see the existing two-story home and the detached accessory structure in the rear. The remainder of the property is largely vacant. Next slide. This is just a street view of the same property taken from the turn on Hillside Terrace just behind the commercial lot. Next slide. So the general plan designation is shown in the exhibit on the left. The existing general plan designation of Commercial Neighborhood is proposed to be changed to Medium Low Density Residential. The zoning exhibit is on the right showing the change from Commercial to Single Family Residential. These exhibits were also included in your agenda report packet. Next slide, please. The proposed general plan amendment and zone change would address the existing residential non-conforming use of the site. There's existing development on the property that would comply with the requirements of the proposed R1 zone. The planning staff has been dealing with multiple requests to improve this property over the years. And as a result of the existing commercial zoning, it's been difficult to permit improvements that really are appropriate for the site. The proposed R1 would not permit further subdivision of the lot. The minimum lot size in the R1 zone is 10,000 square feet and the lot's just under 20,000 square feet, so not subdividable with the proposed zoning. Based on correspondence with the applicant, no further construction or development is proposed other than building permits to bring the site into conformity with the R1 zone. And finally, based on staff's opinion and the topography and access to the property, the site's better suited for residential use than the current commercial zoning. Next slide, please. Staff supports the request for the general plan amendment and zone change. The Planning Commission reviewed staff's request on March 2nd and recommended approval. The Planning Commission resolution and their findings are included in the packet in accordance with the government code requirements. And with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a general plan amendment and introduce and adopt an ordinance approving a zone change for the parcel at 135 Hillside Terrace as presented. I know the applicant Kevin Baker is available for questions, but he does not have a presentation. And with that, that completes my staff presentation and I'm available for any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Okay, does the council want to hear any, like, the public comment first? Yeah? So City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
We do not have any members of the public that would like to speak, so we'll close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, then I guess we'll call on each of the council members. So Deputy Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
Councilmember Contreras had her hand raised. If you want to check on her first, I'd be totally okay with that.
I was going to go through all of you, but okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to voice my support for this change. You know, definitely what, and I want the staff for bringing this forward and presenting us this information. I'm very familiar with this location and, you know, it just really sucks that this individual property owner is not able to pursue what they're trying to do with their residence. So I am 100% in favor of changing the zoning so that they can pursue what they want to do.
Okay, so then I'll go back to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. No, if I understand correctly, this is simply just us changing the zoning to allow for the highest and best use of this property for the property owner. We're not redeveloping the lot. We're not subdividing the lot. The square footage size that we're amending it to doesn't allow for additional lots to be built. So what we're really doing is working with the property owner so that we can stop finding him as a commercial property and changing it to a residential property, which is the highest and best use of the property. So I definitely appreciate staff working with our residents. So with that, I would move to close the public hearing and approve staff's recommendation. Rest of my council member speak.
Okay, Councilmember, you have any questions or comments?
I think you called on me and there was a little bit of a glitch. Did you call on me?
Okay, thank you, Franklin.
I apologize. I didn't mean to jump in the line. I don't have anything additional to add. I agree with staff's recommendation and I would second the motion.
Okay, how about Councilmember Melendez? Do you have any comments or questions?
I do not have any comments or questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by, a second by, is it Franklin? Who's the second? Franklin, okay. So City Clerk, please conduct our roll call vote.
Thank you. Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Aye.
Mayor Ritter.
Aye.
The vote, the item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That brings us to our second public hearing. The second public hearing is to receive testimony regarding the Central Vista Business Improvement District Annual Levy. Public hearing is now open. Economic Development Director Kevin Hamm is going to provide the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raised hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Hamm.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In February, the City Council approved the fiscal year 2122 Central Vista Business Improvement District Annual Report and set this public hearing. If no majority protests exist during this public hearing, the assessment levy may be approved by the City Council. The CVBID is a self-assessment mechanism which supports marketing activities and programs overseen by the CVBID Advisory Board. The report recommends maintaining the fees, boundaries and programs and suspending the fees if the pandemic is still impacting businesses in June of this year. If warranted, staff will bring back a fee suspension resolution to the council in June. Last year, the council suspended the fees and the board used any savings to undertake a marketing effort to support downtown businesses. Given that about only $10,000 in savings remain, the advisory board is requesting $15,000 from the city to support future marketing. Staff suggests considering of this, consideration of this funding request when you discuss programs to be funded under the new COVID-19 relief package from the federal government. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution confirming the annual report and levying the assessments. As previously stated, staff will return with a fee suspension and grant proposal if warranted and at the appropriate time. This concludes my report. And the CVBID Advisory Chair, Lisa DeJew, and I are available for any questions. Thank you.
Do the council want to hear public comments first? Yes? Okay, then City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
We do not have any members who would like to speak on this item, so we'll close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, so then with that, we will move on and anybody, any of the council members that have any, anything that they want to add? Any comments or questions? And Deputy Mayor Green.
I want to thank staff for this report and I also want to thank them for being sensitive to our business owners. This levy on business owners in this COVID time can be tough financially. And to say that we're going to come back if it's a tough financial situation or we're not able to use the funds in the way we want to use them, I think is extremely sensitive to our business community and I appreciate staff doing that. So with that said, seeing no other real comments, I would move that we close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation on this item.
I would second that.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second and seeing no further comments from anyone. I would have a, Clerk Valdez, if you'll call a roll call.
Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Aye.
Mayor Ritter.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to our third public hearing, our final public hearing to receive testimony regarding the 202122 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and substantial amendment to 20192020 Annual Action Plan to Accept CARES Act Funding. So the public hearing is now open. House Manager Sylvia Silice Daniels will provide the staff report. And if any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raised hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. So that will turn it over to our House Manager Sylvia Silice Daniels.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The focus of today's hearing is to review and receive comments on the proposed 20212022 Annual Action Plan and a substantial amendment to the 20192020 Annual Action Plan to Accept CARES Act Funding. Next slide. The Annual Action Plan identifies the city's spending plan and projects that assist the city in meeting its housing and community development goals outlined in the city's consolidated plan. The consideration and approval of the Annual Action Plan is a two-step process. The first step of the approval process is conducting a public hearing to review and receive comments on the proposed 2021 Annual Plan and open a 30-day public comment review period. Finalized plans will be presented for approval on the April 27th meeting after a 30-day public comment period. Next slide. The city's 2021, 20, or 2020 to 2021 Annual Allocation is $1,097,777. Additionally, there is $531,000 in $626 in prior year's unprogrammed funding. A total of $1,629,403 is available for fiscal year 202122. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that the federal Community Development Block Grant, often referred to as CDVG, be spent to address three specific areas. The first is program administration with a cap of 15%. Next is capital projects. And finally, public social service programs with a 20% cap. Next slide. On December 10th, 2019, the City Council approved public service funding priorities for the city's five-year consolidated plan based on resident feedback. On January 2nd, 2020, city staff issued a request for proposals for eligible two-year public service projects addressing one of the following approved categories. Emergency shelter, homelessness, housing services and emergency assistance, health services including mental health and substance abuse, and support services for seniors and special needs, as well as crime awareness and prevention services. The city set aside $49,400 in public service dollars. $16,000 of that is for the senior city, the city's senior nutrition program and $32,000 for Operation Hope. The CDVG Citizens Advisory Committee reviewed and evaluated proposals submitted in February 2020 and then made recommendations to fund aid public service providers for two-year awards. This represents the second year of those awards. The advisory committee met again on February 25th, 2021 to evaluate the progress of the public service providers and confirm the funding levels for the 2021 program year. All sub-receipients are meeting or exceeding their program goals and objectives. The advisory committee recommends maintaining funding levels at the same as last year, as noted on Slide 4. Next slide. The total amount available for capital projects is $1,245,181 from fiscal year 2122. This amount includes $713,000 from regular entitlement program and $531,000 in unprogrammed prior year funds. The current proposed sidewalk project that will fund, that will be funded is the Avenida de Benito Juarez project between Connecticut and West California. This will include installation of sidewalk for the community and identified, or for the community that has been identified with mobility needs. Additionally, funds will also support the library, which will receive an updated or additional external fixtures to the roof project, including the pergola. Next slide, please. The summary of proposed annual action plan funds are as follows. 15% of funding will go to public service projects. 65% of funding will go to capital projects and 20% going to administration, including fair housing services. The capital projects will be funded with, additional funding will go from unprogrammed prior year funding of $531,000. Next slide, please. The total CDVG CARES Act allocation is $784,865. The proposed allocation represents 11% of funds for program administration and 32% of funds for capital projects. And finally, 57% of funds for public service providers. The city is required to identify the proposed use of all funds to prepare, prevent and respond to the coronavirus pandemic. Next slide. A summary of the proposed CDVG coronavirus activities is as follows. $127,000 is going to be dedicated to public facility infrastructure improvements, which will include the installation of water bottle filling stations at parks, as well as the installation of touchless amenities at park restrooms. $123,000 for public facility infrastructure program improvements at the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity Center in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. $450,000 is being recommended for public services to provide a notice of funding availability for an opportunity for community-based organizations to apply for funding for projects that benefit low-income persons and align with the city's consolidated plan. Additionally, the proposed project must demonstrate a clear connection to the COVID-19 pandemic. And finally, $84,000 has been included for administration, including monitoring, evaluation, report and contract management for the CDVG activities. Next slide. And finally, I'd like to thank the CDVG Advisory Committee members for their support and dedication to the city. We appreciate your commitment to the process and could not have done this without you. This concludes the public hearing and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Hey, do I have any questions from any of our council members? Do you want to hear public comments first? Anybody shaking their heads? Okay. So City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments. You did receive a few via email. So we'll go ahead and close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, so with that, I'll ask if I have any comments from the council members. Councilmember Melendez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff for putting these recommendations together. I understand that it was within a short timeframe that the staff had to develop the best use for these Community Development Block Grant funds. And one of the things that I really liked that came out of this was the potential implementation of water bottle faucets at some of our parks. As you know, I really believe in staying hydrated. I got a big gallon right here. And I really love that opportunity for our community members to be able to have, you know, fresh water available, to refill their reusable water bottles, you know, continuing this effort to reduce our plastic waste. So I think it's a great effort by staff and I just appreciate all the work that you put into it. Thank you.
Do you have any other council, have any comments? Deputy Mayor Green.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, our CDVG committee has a tough job. And not only do they have to select these organizations every two years, but they absolutely have to go out and make sure that they're holding them accountable and that the money we're giving them is truly being used to benefit the community. So I appreciate what they do so much. I know that it's an extremely tough job. That $784,000 of CARE Act funding that came in. That $784,000 of CARE Act funding that came in, that Councilmember Melendez was talking about, I know you had to come up with a plan for that, and having $450,000 available for our community-based organizations and low-income organizations to apply, I think is amazing. I mean, the, these, the work that our staff is doing and our city is doing to give back to our community is phenomenal. So with that said, I would move that we close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation on this particular item after Councilwoman Contreras.
I second that.
Councilmember Contreras. Did you have any comments or questions?
I do, I do. You know what? I think it's just incredible the way that we have focused in on what our community needs are. The CDVG committee did such a great job reviewing everything, and along with what Deputy Mayor Green said, you know, that $450,000 available to community-based organizations, like, that, that is a huge deal to me, and I just really want to applaud staff. I want to applaud, you know, our council for being very vocal about, hey, you know what? There are certain needs that our community has that we may not be aware of, right? And so this is an opportunity for those community-based organizations to, you know, be able to apply for some funding to really help our, our low-income residents. I, I think this is a beautiful plan before us, and just thank you so much to everybody.
Okay, with that, I see no further comments. We have a motion by Deputy Mayor and a second by Councilmember Contreras. So please conduct a roll call vote. City clerk?
Thank you. Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Aye.
Mayor Ritter.
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to our discussion item. We have one discussion item this evening. This item is to consider a proclamation of the Vietnam War Veterans Act of 2017. So if any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raised hand feature or by pressing star nine now. And actually, I asked to have this item put on the agenda, so I was gonna, I, I, it's a proclamation, and so I, I think it's important, and I was gonna read some of it because I think it's important, and actually, the, the people that are my age, of the men that were my age, were the ones that went off to war, and they weren't very well-recognized when they came home from this war. And so I thought I would just read a couple of the things on the proclamation, and it says, "The City of Vista joins the national commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War and recognizes this opportunity to recall with humility the sacrifices our veterans made in the name of freedom. And beginning in 1967, nearly 500,000 American troops served in Vietnam alongside approximately 850,000 troops of our allies. On March 29, 1973, the last of over 2,500 American troops were withdrawn from South Vietnam, ending one of the longest wars in our nation's history. And due to the turbulent cultural and political climate of the era and the unpopularity of the conflict, many returned veterans did not receive the respect and gratitude they richly deserved for serving their nation so happily and honorably." So whereas we embrace our responsibility to help our Vietnam veterans and their families heal from the heavy toll of war, we remember the more than 58,000 whose names are memorialized on Black Granite Wall in our nation's Capitol for having borne the heaviest costs, including nine of our fellow Vistons, and we also pay tribute to the brave patriots who suffered as prisoners of war, and we stand steadfast in our commitment not to rest until we account for the 1,253 heroes who have not yet been returned to American soil, including one of our fellow Vistons. So with that, we will honor all of those who answered our nation's call to duty with strong conviction. Our city pledges our enduring respect, our continuing care, and our everlasting commitment to all Vietnam veterans. Vietnam veterans can be proud of their legacy of patriotism, dedication, devotion to the cause of freedom, and continued service to their communities. So with that, the Vista City Council recognizes the National Vietnam War Recognition Act, signed into law in 2017, officially designated March 29 of every year as the day all Americans collectively can say thank you and welcome home. So therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council call upon all veterans, all Vistons, to honor, recognize, and thank those who answered the call to serve and hereby proclaim March 29, 2021 as National Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Vista. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve of this proclamation. Anyone?
I second that wholeheartedly.
Councilmember Franklin.
I just wanted to say thank you very much, Mayor, for bringing this forward. It's an excellent resolution, and I'm glad that we're taking time to honor our Vietnam veterans.
Thank you. And then, did I see somebody else wave their hand, or did somebody want to second that?
Yeah, but Councilmember Contreras.
Okay. I just wanted to say something also, I think. Councilmember Melendez?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward, Madam Mayor. I, I just want to say and give respect and honor to our veterans, especially as a mental health advocate, to acknowledge that the struggle still continues for many of our veterans and that mental health crisis faces many of those in our veteran community, and I, I want to make myself available to anyone who is being challenged with mental health crisis that I can assist in directing you to the right resources because, you know, being able to honor our veterans, we want to show them as much support as possible. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for bringing this to our attention, for giving us the chance to honor our veteran community or Vietnam veterans. And I just want to also reach out and let our veteran community here in Vista know that there are resources available for those that are struggling, and your council and myself support you wholeheartedly, and yes, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that want to speak on that? I forgot to ask that.
No, we do not have any speakers on this item, so we'll close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, and so we have a motion and a second, and so can we do a roll call vote?
Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Aye.
Mayor Ritter.
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
That brings us to our oral communications, and this is an opportunity for the public to comment on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda. If any members of the public wish to address the city council, they may indicate so by using the raised hand feature or by pressing star nine now. City Clerk Valdez, we have any members of the public that wish to provide oral communications?
Yes, we do. First, we have, I believe it is Terri Anne Skelly. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Are you there? Good evening, my name, hello?
Go ahead.
Oh, great, hi. That was a lovely proclamation there, just wanted to say. At any rate, my name is Terri Anne Skelly. I work in Vista and am a mother of three adult sons. I've appreciated listening to the city council members' interest in improving Vista. There is much concern in the public health community regarding the unregulated THC content of marijuana products. I wanted to share a recent situation in San Diego when a 28-year-old flight attendant from Alabama died in San Diego after consuming a Cushy Punch Tropical Hybrid gummy bought here in San Diego. The attorney for the family reported that the young woman experienced severe psychological and physiological symptoms after consuming a gummy, including trouble breathing, uncontrollable movements, increased heart rate, rate, uncharacteristic behavior, and panic attacks. She died hours after ingestion. These companies disguise and market their products as safe, fun, and healthy, going so far as to represent to consumers that the product's delivered the well-being and relief to all those that seek it. What they don't tell consumers is that the use of their products carry extreme risk of serious injury or even death, said the person's attorney. I thought it'd be important for the city manager and the city attorney to know that the responsible parties include those involved in the design, manufacturing, testing, packaging, distribution, and or sale of the Cushy Punch Hybrid gummies, including Passion Care LLC, Desert Zen Incorporated, Vertical Bliss Incorporated, Cushy Punch Incorporated, Moore Agency Incorporated, and UL Holdings Incorporated, doing business as Urban Leaf here in San Diego, especially since the pot shops in Vista have been quite aggressive in advertising their products. Thank you very much.
I think you've muted, Kathy.
Sorry about that. Next is Jim Riegenbach. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Excellent, thanks. Thanks, council and mayor. Just a couple requests. I'd like to request that there are citizen workshops on the budget so that the public can be better informed about the budget and the budget process. And I would like to suggest that those workshops are scheduled at various dates and times, so people that are working in the evening can make it during the day, people that are working during the day can make it in the evening, possibly weekends also. And then also would suggest that a Spanish translator is available at those, so we can include our, our neighbors who speak Spanish. And then, secondly, I understand the city's getting about $27 million from the American Rescue Plan, and so I just want to request full transparency from the city council on how those funds are allocated. Not that I doubt you guys would be transparent, but just want to stress that. And finally, oh, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the, my fellow citizens who got appointed to the commissions. It's pretty cool to see people volunteering and putting their time in, so great job, and thanks for the proclamation honoring Vietnam vets. Good stuff tonight. Thank you.
Next is Kelly. Kelly, if you please state your last name. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you. This is Kelly McCormick, and the parent of a college student and a high school student who is a newly licensed driver, and as those of you with teenagers know, it's a very stressful time. And that's one of the reasons I was so alarmed to learn that San Diego County will likely set a record for the number of traffic fatalities linked to intoxicated drivers in 2020, despite there being fewer cars on the road due to the pandemic. This is also consistent with a new study from the National Safety Council showing a 24% spike in roadway deaths, the highest in 96 years. And it's not just alcohol that's to blame. In fact, San Diego City Attorney Mara Elliott wrote a commentary recently singling out a significant increase in the number of people driving under the influence of marijuana and the prescription drug Xanax. A new study from the Journal of the American Medical Association reports that about half of teens who use marijuana on a regular basis admit to driving while high. This trend must be changed. If a person has used marijuana before getting behind the wheel, they will have trouble staying in their lane, reacting quickly, staying focused, and using their peripheral vision. The state and cities like Vista must do more to educate drivers about the dangers of driving while high. All of our lives depend on it. Thank you.
Next is Tyler McCormick. Go ahead, Tyler.
Good evening, my name is Tyler McCormick. I'm a sophomore in high school, and I'm here because I think it's really important to talk about the way that marijuana is affecting the mental and physical health of people my age. For instance, my school has increased the resources dealing with mental health because they noticed that a huge portion of us were feeling stressed and disconnected because of online classes and loss of normal activities. Because of increasing levels of anxiety and depression, some teenagers have turned to marijuana to try and cope with those. There's a huge misconception among us that marijuana is non-addictive and that it won't have any negative side effects, but that's not true. There are many studies showing that teenagers who use marijuana report higher levels of depression and anxiety than those who refrain. They're also more likely to think about suicide or to attempt suicide. This is the side of, this is the side of smoking and vaping that the marijuana industry tries to hide. They try to make it seem harmless by putting it in colorful packaging with different flavors. They don't want us to think about the lung and heart damage caused by vaping or smoking or the effect they can have on mental health. As the industry continues to expand, I hope that you're ready to deal with the consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is it. We do not have any other speakers, so we'll close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, that takes us to our remarks. I will give my mayor's comments, and then I'll go through each council member, and they can give their remarks and anything they have to say. So we'll start with this. Summer day, summer day camp registration begins on April 13. It's almost summer, you guys. This year's lineup may look a little different due to COVID. However, kids aged three years old through eighth grade can still socialize, learn, and enjoy indoor and outdoor activities at the Jim Porter Recreation Center. More information is online at vista recreation dot com, and that starts April 13, which is coming up very soon. The internet list is now open for Paseo Artist Village, the affordable housing apartment under construction on South Santa Fe Avenue. It's expected to open later this winter, and more information is online at cityofvista.com under the Affordable Housing section. And lastly, Vista needed, Vista needed the recent wet weather, however, sometimes potholes can develop in our streets after rain. We're asking residents to report a pothole if they come across one on our Access Vista mobile app or online at cityofvista.com. Our public works crews will fix the potholes to keep our roads smooth and safe for drivers, but we need you guys all out there to report them when you see them. So that ends my comments, and I will start going down the row here with Councilmember Melendez. We'll start with you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to add. I just want to say thank you to staff and to my fellow councilmembers for a efficient meeting tonight. I want to encourage everyone who is able to remember to get the vaccine and to do your part in continuing to manage the spread of the coronavirus. And I also wanted to say I'm really excited about some of the things that we voted on tonight, like the commission appointments. I'm really looking forward to our new board and commissioners and our consent item, consent calendar item, the Kites Over Vista, being able to see those installations go up in the future, that's going to be really great and something to look forward to. So I hope everyone has a really great rest through their night, and God bless.
Thank you. So let's see, I'll go next to Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything else to add this evening.
Okay, how about Deputy Mayor Green? I think you're muted.
Dang it, I thought I clicked the button. My bad. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Yeah, a few things. Number one, I want to congratulate the Vista Chamber of Commerce on an amazing event, the Heroes of Vista event. Thank you, City Manager Johnson, for all your commentary throughout tonight. That was really good. I also want to congratulate Carol and John Herrera, two Vistons who've done a ton of work in the community, and they were honored at the Heroes of Vista Award. And we have Leah is one of our awesome sheriff's deputies who does a ton of work around the community, used to be a school resource officer and doing a lot to bring the community together. And a special one I wanted to shout out was Fire Captain Justin Golden. His daughter is actually my daughter's best friend, and in his interview, he was named firefighter of the year, and he told people, "Don't think too highly of him, he's still just JG." And I thought it was the best interview at Heroes of Vista, so I'd like to give Justin a shout out. Lastly, we are in the red tier now, which means there's some indoor dining available in Vista, and we have a lot of businesses that have been struggling. The outdoor dining is still available, but the indoor dining is safe. They're maintaining social distance, keeping things safe, but get out there and support your local restaurants. If you're healthy, make sure you're doing your part to stop the spread. And once again, thank you to staff for a great night. The items we voted on were amazing and are going to make a huge difference for our city. Thank you again, Madam Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers.
Councilmember Contreras?
Don't have too much to add. I just want to echo everybody's comments in that, you know, it was a fantastic council meeting today. A lot was approved and vote on, voted on that is going to make a huge difference to our community. And I just, you know, want to continue thanking my coworkers on staff for always preparing really great reports for us and presentations. And I was watching the Heroes event on Saturday. It was fabulous, but I hope you all have a very, very, very good night, and definitely support our local businesses. Go out to eat. Vista has amazing food and amazing beer. What else could you want?
And it's Taco Tuesday. Okay, city manager, Patrick Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, we are in the red tier, which means that restaurants, gyms can operate at modified conditions, but in modified conditions, but also Sinopolis, which opened last Friday, is open for business. And we've heard a lot of great things from residents that they're finally able to go back to the movie theaters. So in addition to going to the gym, going to the restaurants, make sure you go to Vista Village and check out Sinopolis and the shops around there. And the one thing I had tonight was that the city has seen an increase or witnessed an increase in the questions around homelessness in Vista. So we've put together a webpage on our website at thecityofvista.com/housing that has a frequently asked questions page to give residents and businesses more information on homeless and the services that we do provide. So please check that out. And the question that Councilman Franklin had asked is, "How many beds do we have available tonight?" And today, we actually only have one bed available at Haven House. All the beds at La Posada are full that the city has purchased, and I would say that the social worker over the last five months, we're starting to see the benefits of the referrals that she's made, and they're starting to take hold. So her interacting with those individuals, suddenly we're seeing that a majority of our beds are full at this point in time. So we'll continue to track that, and we will also come back to the city council at the end of April at your last meeting to provide a very detailed update on the homeless strategic plan. So thank you.
What about our city attorney, Darryl Piper? Do you have anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
And how about our city clerk, Kathy Valdez?
Nothing, thank you.
With that, we are adjourned. Have a good week, you guys.